Good to know.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission to order, we are April 5th, 2023. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213.
No, I don't think, maybe she's not.
There you go.
All right, thank you. Bottom line, shut down. We're gonna start over. The mic wasn't on.
A mulligan.
Everybody else was like so. Thanks. All right. We are now going to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission, April 5th of 2023. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you are parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open, no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy to those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 1.2 Preliminary Platte 23002, 1.3 Special Permit 23016, and 4.2C Preliminary Platte 22004. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 22nd, 2023.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Ball?
Abstain.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda, scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
I wanted to please note that Agenda Item 1.3 Special Permit 23016 is being removed from the consent agenda and is scheduled for public hearing today. First item on consent, 1.1 Change of Zone 23018 from P Public District to H4 General Commercial District for the QNL LLC zoning change on property generally located at 2201 South 84th Street. Next item, 1.2 Preliminary Platte 23002 for two commercial lots on property generally located at 97 East South 148th Street. The Planning Commission action is final unless appealed to the Lancaster County Board. Again, this is final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
Don't see any.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting in any of these sites to be disclosed?
Nope.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on these consent agenda items? Please stand and state that item.
All right, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I would move we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved, eight to zero.
I will now ask Shelley to call the request for deferral.
We did see staff recommending that item 5.2 miscellaneous 23001 to revoke existing special permit 21005 on property generally located at 22500 South 176th Street. Be placed on pending until further notice.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this application today? We will now proceed to public hearing. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
First item is special permit 23016 removed from the consent agenda. This special permit is to allow for a CUP Community Unit Plan for up to three lots with associated waivers on property generally located at 3505 Mill Road. The Planning Commission action is final unless appealed to the City Council. Again, this is final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon. Tom Chaka, Planning Staff. This application is for a special permit for a community unit plan for three lots with associated waivers. The property is located on Mill Road between North 27th and North 40th Street. If it shows up. The lots are approximately three to four acres in size. One of the lots will be for the existing house. 40th Streets over here, Mill Road. This is within the city's... This way. So north is up. So this is outside the city limits but within the city of Lincoln's three-mile zoning jurisdiction. And developments within that three-mile area are required to do what is called build-through, which basically shows how the lots could further subdivide into the future. Basically, each lot has to show one-acre sized lots where they could be split into one-acre size in the future. They also have to show a concept of the remaining open space and where the roads could be shown conceptually. Build-through also requires typically to show a master plan for more detailed development for the urban reserve open space. They requested a waiver to that, and planning is recommending approval. Basically, because when you try to lay something out at this stage and it might not be for 20 years, it's gonna change. So that's why we're supportive of that waiver. The Community Unit Plan requires that 75% of this total area remain in open space. It can be used for agricultural farming or some type of open space. And like I said, it's reserved for future development. The density is at .055 dwelling units per acre, which does work out to 3.7 dwelling units. And under city zoning, you're not allowed to round up. So three dwelling units is the maximum for this parcel. They are showing a private street along the west boundary. And the applicant will be talking about that, and Steve will talk about this here when I'm done. One of the conditions is that we have planning houses to change that to a public street, which the applicant is opposing. Playing fields, it's important that it be a public street so when it, in the future, when it can extend further south, that the three property owners are not... Well, that the public street would then be maintained by the county. Whereas if it's a private street and extends, then there's a possibility that these three property owners would be stuck with the maintenance expense of it. That's kind of the overall for the development, and Steve's gonna talk a little bit more about private versus public streets.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. We don't often have a lot of discussions or debates about public streets versus private roadways, so we thought it would be important for both the public and for Planning Commission members to give a little background on this matter. Because at first blush, it may seem a little strange for the public to be advocating to have it actually not be a private roadway and be a public street. It would certainly make some sense to say, well, from the public viewpoint, you'd be saving the cost of maintaining the public street. Why not have the private parties maintain the private roadway? So, but we thought we'd explain then, so why does the city have a policy actually against this? And we amended our subdivision ordinance several years ago to say residential streets that have 10 lots or less should not be private roadways. And so we'll get into a little bit of the explanation of that. And it really kind of fundamentally goes down to what is the long-term impact of having this property be a private roadway? Because at the first blush, it may seem very simple to say, well, those three property owners will know that they have to maintain it. Because Lancaster County has a policy that a public street, and this is in the county outside of the city limits, a county road, when it has less than six lots, the county doesn't maintain it. So if you have three lots, four lots, five lots, the county doesn't maintain the street out in front of you. So I can understand the applicant's viewpoint of, well, if they're not gonna maintain it, then it looks like we're gonna have to maintain it in the near term here. So we might as well own it and have it a private roadway. However, it really doesn't look at the long-term impact, and the long-term impact is what both myself and Bob Simmering with LTU can let you know, is we get an awful lot of calls then from the property owners of that private roadway, five, 10, 20 years down the road, who are tired of maintaining it. And so first off is that the property owners, the problems they have over time is, let's say there's four or five houses maintaining it. Initially, all three of them or four of them agree, yeah, I'll help pay some money every year to maintain the road. Well, after a few years, a couple of people move and come and go, and the new people come in and say, yeah, no, I don't want to help maintain this anymore. It's a, I don't think that's the way I want to spend my money. So now you got one property owner trying to collect, you know, dues from the other property owners to simply maintain the street. So we hear a lot of that complaint of, over time, it just becomes inequitable among themselves because not everybody pays. And unlike property taxes, which it's, you know, there are methods, if you don't pay your property taxes to get that collected, it's much more difficult for individuals. The other item too is, is that you have people who have no experience maintaining a street, maintaining a street. And so they often have, you know, questions over time, well, what am I supposed to do? This occurred, this problem occurred. What am I supposed to do with that? And so that is often quite a challenge in terms of expecting people who have no experience in maintaining streets in order to maintain a street. But then really kind of the bigger question that comes in is this particular example. So here in red is the area of the CUP. You have the three lots that would end up happening in the private roadway in orange. So the private roadway though is not private in the sense that it is not just for them and nobody else can use it. It has a public access easement over it. And a matter of fact, the whole purpose of this street is that in the long term, it would connect to adjacent lots, and we don't end up with a bunch of little cul-de-sacs off a arterial street that don't connect to each other, and every time you want to go from one house to another, you have to go back out onto the arterial street, back. We're trying to get connectivity, not just in the city, but even connections in an acreage setting. And so in this circumstance, to the west, you have the northwest quarter, and you also have Lot 18. So in the future, if they come forward and want to do an AG CUP like this property owner, and you have a fairly substantial floodway and flood plain to the west, the more likely layout is for there to be three or four more lots on the west side whose access would be off of the new street. So now they are required by city regulations to use that new street, and it becomes quite difficult actually to make sure that they're gonna have a common association. What if these three property owners didn't actually have an association? They were just informally collecting the money. How do we get them to pay to use the private roadway? And so ultimately also though, if it's a private roadway and you now have six lots, the county would start making, taking over maintenance. So once you get to that threshold of six or more, now the county would maintain it. And so unlike the circumstance of it's a private roadway where you're stuck with the private roadway forever, here in the future, there is actually a mechanism for those three property owners to someday have the public take over maintenance and then have the public expertise of maintaining that road. So, and then what we will also find is that when this subdivision is proposed, if it's a private roadway, those three property owners will say, I don't want them using my road that I have to maintain to come and go for access. We also note too that in a lot of our subdivisions, since we have so many of them that do have public streets that are maintained by the public, we get a lot of complaints as to, well, why is that acreage subdivision have their streets maintained, but I don't have my streets maintained? And so there's a real equity discussion that gets involved with this too. But I can let you know that a lot of staff time is spent with people who later than call us because they want to have their private roadway converted to a public street. And so it's for that really host of multitude of reasons why the city jurisdiction, and again, this is outside of the city limits, but it is in the city zoning jurisdiction, why the city actually amended the subdivision ordinance to say this type of development should be discouraged. You shouldn't have private roadways when you have less than 10 lots. We picked the number 10 because we found with some of the larger acreage subdivisions or urban subdivisions, okay, they were starting to become more of a mass. But we certainly, even if there's 100 lots, don't encourage private roadways when other traffic is then gonna use that street. Because then you get into the, those people are using our street and we're paying for it and they're not. And that's exactly the circumstance that could happen here in the long term, is that somebody would locate on the west side. So, and as one last real world example, just to show you that we're not just saying that this might happen, but that it actually does happen. This is at 105th and A. The private roadway is in the pink item here. The houses that are in blue are the houses that are paying to support and maintain that private roadway. So the three lots on the west side, right off the bat, can, and one of them does use the private roadway to come and go, but they don't have to maintain it. And then to the south, we have the Fire Ridge subdivision that was approved, that someday will be connecting to 105th. And so right off the bat, the owners from on 105th said, well, we want our street closed. We don't want that traffic to come through us. In this circumstance, the city said, we are willing to try to work with them to see what we can do to get this converted to a public street because that would only be fair. But it's gonna be quite a challenge because does that street meet city standards? And they've been maintaining it for a long time, and I'm not trying to cast any bad doubts on those folks. I'm sure they've done their best to try to maintain it. So it becomes a real challenge when you have something that is set up to be later used by other people. And here's a real-life example of where that indeed happened and caused a lot of problems when it was a private roadway. So anyhow, we just wanted to give that background before we got into the applicant's testimony then.
Steve, is there really a set process when someone comes in and says, hey, I want my private road to go to public? I mean, is there like steps they have to take or?
Well, in the city, basically, it is discouraged and we haven't had that occur. It's happened once recently in the county that I know of. What they have done is they have talked to the county engineer and said, what do I need to do to bring my street up to complete standards? And sometimes after a long period of time, that is quite difficult. They would have to amend the CUP to have it go from a private roadway to a public street. There's no guarantee that the city or in this circumstance with the county board, if it was in the county jurisdiction, to approve that. So it is, really doesn't happen in the city, and it's only one time in the recently that I can think of in the county.
And I assume that to get those, to get a private street up to the public standards, they would have to pay those costs before.
Correct.
So that could be very cost prohibitive as well.
And often sometimes if you're dealing with an older private roadway, the county engineer and the residents don't exactly know what's underneath it, if it's paved. And so there's questions that come up then about, well, how do we know what we're getting our, the county's standpoint, what we're getting ourselves into? So it's not an easy thing, and the residents then have to judge. This is quite costly to get us done with this, but does it pay off in the long term that we don't have to maintain this for another 20 years? And so we just think it makes more sense to have it be a public street upfront and avoid all of the potential long-term headaches.
Probably additional question. So the lot to the left, the west. In the event they do create a CUP, can it be required for them to put the public road? And what does that mean for the private road in the event?
Well, when they came in in this circumstance, no, we can't necessarily require them to bring that up to public street standards. It's already a private roadway with a public access easement. They would just say, that's what it's approved for. You meant this to be there for us to have public access to it. You are limiting our ability to access the arterial street because that, we want to have spacing of those streets for safety. And so they would argue, it's not up to us to fix the street. You set this up to begin with. So we're trying to avoid that argument in the future as well by saying, no, it's a public street. You don't have to worry then about trying to have the question addressed as, is it up to them to bring it up to a better standard?
Can you talk just briefly about what the benefit? What the owner would say the benefit of leaving it a public roadway is to them?
Well, I think they're proposing it be a private roadway with the idea that...
Yeah, sorry, I reversed my words.
No, that's fine.
Private roadway.
Because it's confusing for some people that if it's a public street and there's only three lots, the county's policy is they're not gonna maintain it right away. So from their view, it probably starts with a, well, the people who are selling these lots are gonna know they have to pay for that. Versus in other circumstances, some people are quite surprised to find out two or three years after they moved into their house, the county won't come out and maintain this. What is with that policy? So it's not something that's always clear, because they're not required to maintain it either. It's just the county's policy is the county won't maintain it. And so, you know, ultimately, they hire somebody privately to go out and do something with it, or they do something with it themselves. So I think from their viewpoint, it was to try to avoid confusion upfront. Confusion that, yes, we have found in other circumstances. But in the long term, it just makes more sense for it to be the public street, even though it's a little uncomfortable that early on, you may have to maintain it.
Yeah, Rich.
Steve, I'm not sure if there are standards for a private roadway, but can you contrast that with the standards for a public street?
I'd have Bob Simmering with LTU talk about in the, and this one does get a little bit of a challenging in that, while this is a private roadway, it is a private roadway that's outside of the city limits, so the city is not gonna be maintaining it.
Bob Simmering, LTU. I cannot answer, just like he says, for the county, because I don't think they require those roads to be paved. In the city, we allow narrower street. We allow diagonal parking or 90-degree parking on private streets, where we don't allow that on residential streets in the city that are public, other than in business districts, et cetera. We have a more stringent paving standard. We have a subbase standard that they don't have to follow. So, you know, there's obvious reasons that on the private street, they could build it at a lower cost if it's in the city. In the county, I can't say whether they have to upgrade to those type of standards.
And that'd be a good question also for Rick Onan. Tom can help, I think, address perhaps some of the particulars here, but Rick Onan representing the applicant can get into it if they see there's some advantage as well.
So the county requires roads to be built at different levels depending on the size of the lots. But in this case, lots that are three acres are larger than the roads. But in this case, lots that are three acres or larger than the roads can be gravel. They're gravel with open ditches on, you know, both sides. There may be some difference in the type of crushed rock they use, public versus private. But in either case, gravel is, is allowed.
Tom, what was the remarks about, they couldn't use crushed concrete? It had to be gravel?
Yeah, that came from the county engineer. So I'm not, I think if I remember right, his, a lot of the comments were there were pertaining to if it was going to be a public street.
I think we have a couple other?
I have some questions that aren't related to the street, so, but I don't want to, if anyone else has.
Anybody else have any more questions about the roadway? Okay, go ahead, Tracey.
About two of the waivers. So, one was for roadway width, and so they're asking for an exception to make it wider than normal? Is, am I interpreting that correct?
Yes. And after discussing this with Tim C., City Attorney's Office, it was determined that this technically is not a waiver, does not require a waiver, because yeah, they're, they're technically increasing the width of the right of way from 60 feet to, was it 76 feet, I believe? So...
Okay, so that one really doesn't need to be waived.
Yeah, and in the resolution, it doesn't show up as a waiver.
And then the other one I was, it was just a different wording, so I was a little unclear. It talks about the pedestrian easement. Is that really the sidewalk waiver, because they're out in the county?
No, there's, in city subdivision ordinance, when you have a block over a thousands, over 1,000 feet, you have to have a pedestrian easement.
Okay.
And these are routine waivers that are approved in the county.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right. Testimony from the applicant.
Rick Onan with ENA Consulting, here with Randy Gibenrath, the developer. Oh, address 701 O Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm going to start off, and apologize, I only have one copy of this. I, we forwarded it to Tom, I thought he was going to forward it on. But we have a motion to amend that basically deals with the request to go to a private roadway. And then there's some related conditions of approval that would be deleted for that, so.
If you only have one copy, do we want to have him put him up on the?
We received it electronically.
Yeah, we got it.
You got it? Okay, okay.
So it's not anything in addition to that?
Right, okay. You did get it. Okay, very good. So again, as Tom said, we're looking, looking to do three lots. And I think it's clear that the crux of the issue and the why we asked to take it off of consent agenda is the condition, or the situation with the road. And it is very much an issue of, the county doesn't want to maintain it. We, I can show you an email from the county engineer that says, "We don't want it to be a public roadway." There's confusion either way, whether, whether you make it a public street and the county doesn't maintain it, or if you make it a private roadway and people still call the county to maintain it and it's not theirs. The confusion is there. I think it's clear, if it's upfront, we would have an HOA that would maintain this. The homeowners would be members of that HOA, and so it'd be a very clear designation of who was to maintain the roadway. There is also, as we talked about, kind of the design standards. One of the things that, from a construction standpoint, yes, the developer would like to use crushed concrete rather than crushed rock for the base. That does not meet the county specs, so if it's built as a public road, it has to be crushed rock rather than crushed concrete. So, and that is a fairly significant cost increase for the, for the original construction. So, those are some of the reasonings why we would prefer the private roadway. Another thing, and as, you know, Steve talked about, there, there are a whole host of issues that can come up over this, over time. One thing that Steve didn't mention in terms of, if this property to the west were to develop, if this is a public street, public road, they have access to it and they can use it. They didn't pay for it. So if it's a private roadway, it gives the person that built it and paid for it some control, that if they're going to use it, they become part of the HOA and they contribute to its maintenance, and in some sense, probably also its construction. So, from, from a fairness standpoint in that sense. The reason we went to a little bit, or asking for a wider than typical roadway, we slid the road over intentionally so that we would not have to grade on the adjacent property. Gives us a little bit more room to shape the ditches as we need to, and, and stay off of that individual's property. So that's the only reason we wanted it a little bit wider. Let's see. I guess another issue that I sense is going to come up, that has not been talked about yet, I, we know, we got an email from the neighboring property to the west concerned about wells. This, the existing house on this property has a well that's located over on the east property line. We had that well tested, test is, tests out very adequate for service on this. There are several wells on other acreages to the east that are also, seem to be supplying plenty of water. And this well sits 30 feet higher than this property. So, we feel like there's plenty of water out there. Don't know what, neither one of these, this well or the property on this well are registered. So I really don't know what the condition of that neighboring well is. It could simply be an issue with his well and not, not the access of groundwater. That's probably the crux of it, I guess. I, I know there's a lot to digest over the roadway, and maybe it's better to do that as dialogue than need to try and pick your brain.
All right, questions? Dick?
Am I correct that if it is a public roadway, you would have to pave it versus it being gravel, if it's a private roadway?
No, that is not correct. For this size of subdivision, it would be gravel.
Could still remain gravel, even as a public street?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just the material that you would use to gravel it would be different.
Right, the, the base material. So, so the surfacing gets put in in kind of two layers. So the bottom layer in a typical county roadway would be limestone. We would prefer to use crushed concrete.
You mentioned possible negotiations with the property to the west. Wouldn't this roadway also someday service properties to the south?
Yes, and that property is currently owned by the developer. So, you know, that's the other thing. This, as this develops, or if this would develop further, there's nothing to say that you can't bring that outlot where that roadway exists into that plat and plat it as a public roadway. Might there need to be some upgrades to the road at that point, to get it to standards? Whether, whether it's currently built to standards or not, most likely there will be, and that would be part of that development's cost to get it up to standard. If it, quite frankly, if it was a public roadway now, and it didn't get maintained, and now they come in and do further development, it's going to get into a pissing match whether the county or the developer should upgrade it. If it's a private roadway, it's the developer's responsibility.
So you would pretty much force the west properties to join a HOA and assume responsibility for maintenance if private?
If they wanted to take access to it, that's the way I would see it, yes.
Again, reiterate, how many lots we can have on this piece of property?
In the current situation, we can, we can only plat three based on the allowable density. If we would change zone and urbanize this, then the rules all change.
Okay, so, okay, got it.
Which, I mean, I mean, that's years down the road. We're all long gone by that happens, by the time that happens.
But we have to see it again.
But we have to count for it, right.
If it's a zoning change. That's maybe a staff question, but, okay, that answers my question though. Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. At this time, we will take testimony in support of the application. Is there anyone here? Testimony in support? Neutral testimony? Or testimony in opposition? All right, then we'll move on with staff questions. Kristy, if you want to start?
Yeah, maybe, so, okay, so we can have three lots on the property as it sits now, zone as it sits, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so if it became anything more than that, what would be the process to do that?
Well, the only way they could increase the density, well, there's, I guess, a couple ways. One would be a change of zone from AG to like AGR.
Okay.
A second way would be if they bought more property and added it to the boundary of the community unit plan, which then would come back again before this body.
Okay.
You know, if they bought like property to the south or to the west, then that would add more land, so that would increase their, their density potential.
And they, with what we're making the decision on today, could not add more lots unless they talk to planning commission again?
Correct.
Okay, this doesn't give them the ability to add land?
Nope.
Okay, okay. Any other ways?
Yes, if, if an adjacent property owner, even if this one didn't buy, property owner, but the adjacent property owner wanted to be part of the CUP, they could then include their property into the boundary. Like, for example, if this property down here said, "Yeah, I'd like to have some lots", they could increase the boundary of the CUP to include this, this property, but actually put the lots up here and extend this road, and then the lots would be here.
Okay.
That's probably all of the options.
It was mentioned that the applicant does own the property to the south of that.
No, that's a different owner.
Okay.
He, I think what Rick was saying was that they own the property to the south of where these few for lots are being shown. They own all of this.
And that's the total acreage that allowed them the 3.7?
Correct.
Properties?
Right.
Could they, you know, like right now, they're getting that density bonus for not develop, you know?
Right, 20% for the urban reserve.
I think I answered my own question.
Okay. I did want to comment on the thing about if, if the property over here used the road, if it was private. Well, it's a private road, but it has public access easement over it. Anybody can drive on that road. And, I don't know if, anybody from City Attorney's Office, but I don't know if they could force them to join a HOA or not, so.
I did have a question kind of related to that. So normally when we're developing, and this was kind of brought up, like we require like the developer to pay like half of it if, you know, like someone else's, you know, like if they're on other different sides of the road, like this developer pays half, this developer pays half. How would that work in this situation where the, the west portion isn't developing yet?
Well, since the road's on their property, they're responsible for paying for 100% of it.
Kind of alleviates that issue, okay. Now, what if, when any of the land, like to the west, to the south, and they do, you know, create maybe a new CUP or whatever it is, they change the zone, can they then buy this sliver of land and create it a public street at that point? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I'm following your question. I mean, can a private road convert to a public street in the future?
Well...
It's possible. It's usually difficult, because the road doesn't meet
Right.
Public road standards.
They were, there was some comment about if we plat it as a public road, maybe Steve understands what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so going back to the, as we talked about the presentation, first off is you have to assume that there is some kind of an HOA 10 or 20 years from now. And we're even finding inside the city that often HOAs just stop functioning. So it is quite possible that in 10 or 20 years, there is not an HOA of three lots still doing anything. So maybe there is and maybe there isn't. But as Tom noted, when they come in, they have every right. The developer to the west is going to come in and say, "This is exactly what was, this road was for." It happens that sometimes one developer comes in and pays for the road, particularly when it's a local street. We have a subdivision coming in later, Southwest Village Heights, where that is going to be the case. They're going to plat some roads and some adjacent smaller lots are going to be able to access to them. And they, there's not necessarily a mechanism to repay a local street. So that's just something the original developer has to, to put up with. And so, we also look at the circumstances here too of, okay, perhaps a developer saves $5,000 or $10,000 on the cost of installing a street. What is the cost of that when we're starting to look at the long-term impact? Somebody else then seeing other lots using their property, but they still have to maintain it, or in...
I guess the comment that I think the applicant made was that it could be platted as a public road when future development occurs. And so that's what I was kind of trying to...
Right, but that's what we're trying to point out is, only if it's brought up to county standards. And if it's well below county standards, then who is going to pay the cost to bring it back up? It's not going to be the county. There hasn't been a circumstance where the county went ahead and paid for it. There is no negotiation between the developer and the county as to who's going to pay to maintain it and upgrade it.
Can I just ask my question?
Sure.
Because I think it'll end it. So then, if it was platted and that, that future of a developer would then have to pay for that public road at that time? So basically, we're just kind of passing the buck.
No, not, not the cost to the west. The developer to the west is going to come in and say, "I don't have to upgrade that cost." And the three property owners are going to say, "I don't have to pay that cost." And, and the developer in this case may have sold the farm outlot to another farmer. And so this big outlot on the south end here, that the current developer would own today, he has every right to sell that lot to somebody else to farm. So that farmer is going to say, "It's not my responsibility. We set up an HOA, these three property owners to maintain it. It's up to the three property owners' HOA to maintain it."
Okay, so, let's start fresh.
Sure.
So, someone else buys the property to the west. As part of that, they also option in to buy this section of road. When they do their plat, they could then turn that into a public road, but they would have to pay the cost of making that into a public road?
If the developer comes into the west, they have no reason to buy the road. The road has a public access easement over it, they have every right to use it. There's no incentive to them whatsoever to buy the road.
Okay.
Right.
And that would be the same for like if someone from the south, you know, like on the south property line?
The only difference to the south is that the only way to access the street, you'd also have to buy the land in between. And then you're actually into, you're a part of their CUP. What we're trying to point out is that people to the west could do their own independent CUP that's not a part of the CUP and argue, it's not up to us to maintain that street, you set it up as a private roadway, you specifically approved it as a private roadway with a public access easement, it's meant for us to access.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, so the outlot that is required to be maintained as farmland or natural resources could be a solar farm?
Yes.
And so that would mean a lot of construction equipment and even more so than if it were being used as pasture or crop? Because we've run into that.
Yes.
Correct.
I did want to touch on the water issue since it was brought up. The applicant did submit well information on 21 surrounding wells. Those were reviewed by the Health Department and along with the existing well for the existing house. And Health didn't have concerns with water quantity.
I have another question, Kristy. Okay, this is like way probably too weird. So the example you showed that where we've had these issues in the past, it looked like it had a private driveway with shared access? Like one drive came in and then shared it with three different houses, could they do that? Or do we have to have the roadway put in?
On this, you have to have a roadway, has to be either a public or a private road, not just a driveway.
Okay, so they couldn't just have a driveway come from Mill and then they go to their houses, okay? Because it kind of looked like that on 105, so I was just wondering. Because it only had one access road to the 105, okay.
All right. Applicant rebuttal.
I think again, the issue just really becomes down to who's going to maintain the road? And it's clear that the county is not going to, at least not in the near term, or not until this area would develop again, or develop further. And I kind of try and explain again what I said before. If this is a private roadway in an outlot, that outlot has to be owned by somebody. In this case, it would be owned by the developer, or he could transfer that to the HOA. If someone comes in and wants to develop further to the south and if you change the zone and develop further to the south, that outlot can then become a part of that development. So it becomes in the boundary of that development, if they're going to make it a, now a private or a public roadway, then that dedication is done as part of that plat. And again, it's the developer's property, if he's going to plat a, or build a road to county standards or city standards or whatever, it's his property. It's going to be his responsibility to upgrade the road to that condition, to an acceptable condition before the city will accept it. Pure and simple. If it's a public roadway and it doesn't get maintained, whose responsibility is it? The county's, is it the city's, is it the developers? It's really unclear. If it's privately owned, it's clear whose responsibility it is. As far as access or use, the ability to use the road by the adjacent property, there are ways we can deal with that, we used to call them spite strips, I know they don't like that, but we, again, we're giving them extra width than what we typically would for a private roadway. We could call the public access easement 60 feet wide and have a 16-foot gap between neighbor. Again, I think that just comes down to a function of fairness that if you're going to build a road and somebody else thinks they're going to access it, they should have some responsibility to help pay for it and maintain it. Unless it's a public road, then it's a public responsibility, except the county doesn't want to take that responsibility, so. That's kind of where we're at, we would appreciate support of the amendments and support of the project.
Questions?
So if it's a private roadway, it could be, you could put a gate up there?
No, because it has a public access easement.
Because it has public access?
Yeah, there's a public access easement over it, so we cannot gate it.
Okay.
Is it not correct that if that's, if that, south of that were to be developed, that would create more than 10 lots more than likely? And that's when the county would be mandated to take over responsibility of maintenance?
As it sits now, in order for any of that property to the south to develop, as Steve mentioned, there's, or as Tom mentioned, there's a few ways they could do it. One, it has to be a change of zone, which has to come back before this board. Additional land would have to be added to the CUP, which would bring it back before this board. I mean, there's really no way to do that without being back in front of them. And whether that would remain as a private roadway or a public street, you know, it could go either way. But if it's something that there's an advantage to the development to go to a public street, I think they probably would.
Yeah, Rich?
So the main sticking point is whether the base level is crushed concrete or crushed stone?
Yeah, I mean, there are a few other nuanced differences in terms of the requirements for construction, but that's probably the costliest part of it. There are also some requirements in terms of recording and how much oversight there is in terms of during construction, those kinds of things that the county wants to see if it's a public roadway.
Okay, Dick?
Having done a road that had crushed concrete, we found that there were a lot of pieces of metal in that crushed concrete that created extensive flat tires. And I don't think there's any way to eliminate that. Magnets do some limited good, but there still were flat tires after that.
Sure, understand, and that's the developer's choice at this point, or preference at this point.
All right. Any remaining questions? Thank you very much.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Go ahead.
Core?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Enns?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
I would move to approve special permit to 3016 without amendments.
Second, Core. All right, we have a motion on the floor, discussion.
The reason I feel this way, it's just as Steve explained, there is just too many opportunities for confrontation and fallacy if this is not a public street from the beginning. And there's too many different landowners around this property. And the difference between crushed rock and the crushed concrete is about 50% of additional cost to do the gravel. But I think it eliminates a lot of headaches and a lot of problems in the future, so I will be supporting this.
So 50% is considerable.
It's not as bad as concrete costs and that type of thing, though.
Right, but I'm in agreement, right, I think if we look at future use, right, which we may or may not, you know, be around for that, it can become contentious with developing that land and property. And so if we can save our future commissioners for, from, you know, that angst, you know, I think it's wise for us to do that.
I, early on in my term on the planning commission, I did realize kind of the detriment of private roads because then the HOA and like, I think it was staff that said, a lot of those go defunct, or they just, you know, become silent on things. You know, that's a lot of money and a lot of burden on those property owners, and it just raises a lot of problems. And so I think I have always tried to minimize private roads in anything that we look at. So that's, private roads always cause me a little bit of caution, so that's why I'm not supporting this, to go to a private road.
Additional discussion?
Point of clarification, as it stands now by my motion, it would be a public road.
So I'm not supporting the private road?
Got it.
But I'm supporting the application.
Got it.
All right, Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Enns?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
Now proceed with public hearing.
Next item for public hearing, 4.1A Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23004 to mend the link in Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the Future Land Use Map from Agriculture to Commercial associated with item 4.1B Annexation 23003 to annex approximately 32.29 acres and associated with item 4.1C Change of Zone 23015 from AG Agricultural District to H4 General Commercial District on approximately 23.75 acres, all on property generally located at 10955 11105 1111 111125 and 11205 South 14th Street. Note, there was a staff memo dated April 4, 2023, identified and revised to the annexed area for the Saltillo Express Business Park. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these applications?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, 68508. I will note, so I'll pull up the annexation map, this was part of the memo. Ultimately, was just revising the area of annexation over Highway 77. So I'll speak on all three of these at one time. And so this area currently shown here is zoned ag today.
We can't see. It's not switching. There seems to be some significant lag today, it was blank for a while. No, different camera.
It's coming.
They're on it.
So.
There we go, okay.
Roughly 23.75 acres, approximately five lots today. I believe three of them were for single-family homes at one time. And so it's come forth today, and the reason we want to discuss it and bring it up is just a little bit of a different situation with the annexation process. So the area to the east is also an additional application that's come into our department, not being heard today, but still moving forward. And so that's why we noted as proposed, and that is how this area would be annexed. As if, if City Council was to approve this, then that would make this eligible. Two different developers and applications, but they've decided to move forward with the planning commission today. So they are requesting a change from AG to H4 General Commercial. And then, as I stated, we just removed, after reviewing, we didn't feel it was necessary to annex this area of Highway 77. This area is a little different in the fact, I believe over 40 years ago, much of this area here was rezoned from H2, H3 as it's developed today. And then there's I1 along the east and south, which are not in city limits. So currently with our comprehensive plan, we always encourage for the rezoning to non-residential or commercial industrial to be in city limits. So a little bit different situation. And that's why with this, they're also submitting the comprehensive plan amendment. And this would just be updating this agriculture area to show as commercial and similar and compatible with much of the surrounding area. In the future with H4, then they would be coming back with a preliminary plat or a special permit for the site layout, grading and drainage, that would have to come back before you. Another important thing to note would be for annexation, water and sewer are not available on the site at this time. So they are proposing the annexation of the site with the acknowledgement in the agreement that onsite water and sewer would be handled by the applicant. And then they are working with the east annexation on a traffic impact study and improvements to South 14th for the, a shared intersection point into both sites.
And at this point, do we know for the proposed annexation, any zoning thoughts or requirements, or we don't?
To the, to the east, what they've applied for is, that would be I3 zoning with an associated use permit for their site.
Ben is the, the property right to the north, isn't that outdoor solutions?
It is, and that's.
Okay.
That's.
And that's zoned now ag?
Ag with a special permit to operate that.
And that's proposed to go to a commercial zone?
No, that would, that'd remain ag, so the property line would be here, so this is outdoor solutions.
Right.
And that will stay ag, that's not included in this
Okay.
application.
Questions for Ben?
I guess one last one, so I see buildings, you know what those are on the, in the actual?
Existing buildings there?
Yes.
I believe single-family homes, and the applicant can know, they were set for demolition, so they, some of them may be gone already on that.
All right, thank you. Testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Suite 200, here in Lincoln. Representing Rick Krueger, who has a coalition of landowners on this side of the 14th Street that he's guiding. I'm going to go ahead and throw up the comprehensive plan map, I think that's probably the most effective to talk a little bit more about this piece. So our firm, and I think other firms, were approached over the years by individual parcel owners here who desired to go to a commercial zoning, currently ag, but outside of the city limits and no foreseeable future for water and sewer to be there. And I think we finally reached a critical mass and timing coordinated between our application on this side and the application, it'll be in front of you in probably a month, on the east side, to further kind of solidify the future of the area. We're going to go to the commercial zoning, they're going to go to the I3 zoning. Ties in a pretty easy conversion in the comprehensive plan to show this area. And so, and we understood that back in the day, that was planning to not want to bring in commercial zoning into the county, and so this would be commercial zoning, but coming into the city. And we are all acknowledging that we do understand that we will have to provide our own source of water and sewer systems out there until such time that water gets there, it's part of the annexation agreement. And we have worked with the other side in determining the proper access point on 14th Street and have that all resolved. But again, who's paying for that, how it's being paid, et cetera, will be in the annexation agreement before council. So this is a fairly straightforward, the three items in front of you, comp plan amendment, change zone, annexation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And somebody from Rick Krueger's office is here to speak briefly too, so.
Questions for Mr.? Questions for Mr.? All right, thank you.
Christina Malgoza, Kruger Development, eighty two hundred, Cody Drive, Suite F in Lincoln. Hello, commissioners, it's been a while since I've been in front of you, so there's a lot of new faces to me, and I thought I would introduce myself, so you could put a face to my name. Um, Mike pretty much summed everything up for you perfectly. We've been working with those current property owners probably since last fall. If we gain support from you and approval from council, we're hoping to break ground late this year, possibly early twenty twenty four. Um, it would be smaller owner-operator contractor services, so think plumbers, drywallers, heating and air, those kinds of services out there and anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand square foot buildings, uh, is what we're seeing. And again, we are working amicably with our neighbors across the road and hopefully we can move forward together at council. If you have any questions for me.
Questions? Not at this time, thank you very much. Is there testimony in support of this application? Any neutral testimony? Or anyone here to testify in opposition to this application? Okay, staff questions? Have questions for staff? Think you're off the hook this time. Um, applicant rebuttal, anything else you want to say? Okay. Motion?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve comprehensive plan amendment two three zero zero four.
Second, Core. All right, we can discuss all three.
This is a very logical, uh, fit with the other things that are happening all around it. And, um, with the access of the west bypass, I still call it, um, I think it's Homestead Expressway or something now, but, um, it makes a very, uh, easy movement for the commercial trucks to any place around the city. Uh, and I think this is something that should be supported.
Other discussion?
I just would say I agree, and I'm happy to see there's some development and then with the potential for the annexation of the two groups together and then future potential water and sewer, I just think it helps with our city development. And, and again, with the changes in the roads around that area, I think that's.
Yes.
Really good use.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved eight to zero.
And I would move that we approve annexation two three zero zero three.
Second, Core.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved eight to zero.
And I would move that we approve change of zone two three zero one five.
Second, Core.
Waiting for someone else to go.
Ball three.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved eight to zero. Okay, next item for public hearing, item four point two A, annexation two two zero one four to annex approximately five point five nine acres and associated item four point two B, change of zone two two zero three seven from AG agricultural district to R three residential district totaling approximately four point nine seven acres and associated four point two C preliminary plat two two zero zero four for new preliminary plat, including approximately two hundred point sixty two acres more or less and associated waivers. All items are on property generally located at South Folsom Street and Old Cheney Road. The planning commission action is final on the preliminary plat unless appealed to the Lincoln City Council. Are there any expertise communications to do, to be disclosed on these applications?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Ben Callahan with the planning department, five five five, South Ten Street, six eight five zero eight. Once again, I'll talk about all three items. So I'll start with the preliminary plat area shown here, and then we'll break it down into the smaller annexation and change of zone. But the preliminary plat boundary, this is on South Folsom and West Old Cheney and then Highway seventy seven to the east. Uh, to the north would be the YMCA Ballfields, and then to the east is the developing Fox Tail Meadows PUD and then Optimus Athletic Fields. Um, and the corner on the southeast side would be the Lincoln Housing Authority, CUP, that was approved last year. Uh, so the area is roughly two hundred acres, um, within the preliminary plat. Hopefully I can see here. So they are proposing to develop this in five different phases. Um, some of the main aspects of the plan will be, uh, there is a spot here for a future Lincoln Public School Elementary Site that's being designated. And then, um, the site itself will have five access points into the neighborhood. Um, this would be Southwest Twelfth Street. Uh, currently, I believe it's roughly four hundred and ninety seven residential lots and then twenty three outlots, uh, kind of designated for specific drainage and green space throughout the neighborhood. This would be the proposed phasing plan. Um, so today, and I'll show on a map as well, but they'll be annexing, uh, roughly six acres in this phase one area for, and showing approximately fifteen lots, um, would be the first development phase.
Did you say fifteen? Looks like.
I believe, uh, from the size of the change of zone, that will come through, uh, total there's four hundred and ninety seven lots, um, than, in this case. So the associated annexation, um, they're just proposing a small section here to start off within phase one, um, what would come forward, and they are recommending or requesting, um, AG to R three residential for the site. Go back to this area, so, um, a couple of things would be, the first intersection point, um, they will be developing, uh, will be just on the north side of the Lincoln Housing Authority. Um, so part of the annexation agreement with the intersection improvements, they are working with Lincoln Housing on the location and then the construction of the access point shown here. Um, and that was one of the conditions in the report, is also work with L T U on the exact location for that. Couple other things would be along the north, they are showing, um, two access points that we worked with them on, and that would just be for future development of if YMCA would like an access point or that, um, in the future.
Ben, what's the hatched area? I can't read what it says.
Yes, so this, um, this area which would come forward in, in the future, um, they are showing for possibly an R five residential, um, possibly to allow for some multifamily along South Folsom. And in the future, uh, north of this area that will be annexed, that could also be an R five, that would have to come back for a change of zone. That's just how they're showing that today for a multifamily use. Uh, the remaining of the area in the plat is shown for R three, single family lots.
And where is, um, further north? Does your map show anything further north? How far up is the Ballfield?
This would be the property line for the YMCA today.
Okay. Thank you.
So they're right on the edge of the YMCA.
Got it.
Overall, I guess, we'd mentioned on the comprehensive plan, um, it's shown as future urban residential and compatible with the surrounding uses and developing area. And then as well to the south would be the developing Southwest Village Heights, that was also done by preliminary plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I wanted to get clarification on something in the, I wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly in the staff report. So it talks about the waiver for the, the block lengths, and most of them weren't needed, which is great. Um, but on block twenty six, so up there by those Ballfields, um, that north property line, um, I just wasn't sure I was interpreting this properly. So are you saying it's okay for block twenty six to be longer, um, than our thirteen twenty feet because that provides a nice separation from, from potential multifamily to the Ballfields? Or were you saying? That there was a break needed there, I wasn't really sure.
Yeah, so that was, um, so we justified that with the idea that it would be dividing the multifamily area, um, and just as they're showing that as one larger development for multifamily, um, was why we felt that was appropriate as one.
To waive that length to be a little bit longer, okay. Thank you.
Other questions at this time? All right, thank you. Testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission, Danae Kalkowski, appearing today on behalf of Southwest Folsom Development LLC. Um, as Ben mentioned, um, this client was the developer for about a hun, same, same amount of property just to the south of Old Cheney here between, um, Southwest Twelfth and, and of South Folsom Street. That, um, development's progressing nicely, and so they're now continuing to move to the north to provide additional development opportunities, um, in Southwest Lincoln for the area now to the north. Um, so again, it's largely a preliminary plat, um, showing single family residential with an opportunity for, um, some multifamily residential on the north end of the site. We are, um, just annexing and zoning the very first phase. We thought it might be precipitated more by the need for that access point from Lincoln Housing Authority, but at this stage, there might not be a hurry for that. But this allows us to kind of lock the plan in and have it in place. So you're likely to see us back here again with multiple phases of annexation and development, very similar to what we did on the south side. Um, as Ben mentioned, we got multiple access points, this site's sort of unique where we have almost two arterials on a really half mile distance. So, um, we will be working through an annexation agreement with the city on the improvements that are required for those intersections. A lot of work has been done over the last several months on this project, coordinating those access points with the property to the east and with Lincoln Housing Authority and the project to the south. So, um, appreciate the help of city staff and being patient and working through the details with us. And because we've done that, um, I think we have a whole list of conditions on our, um, staff report, all of which are acceptable with one little change, and I don't think this is going to be a change that's problematic. I'll stick it up here and make it easier. We are just asking for a slight adjustment to condition one point one, point one five. Right now, there's a condition that was added to revise the rideaway to show sixty six feet of rideaway from the center line, and that would be to accommodate the trail on the west side of Folsom Street. We don't have any issue with accommodating the trail. What we do want to do is work with Public Works and see if they really need that additional, uh, width. Um, now that we've moved more to a cross section that's using, um, roundabouts at the intersections, you know, the standard width for arterial rideaway has been based upon the old plan that called for those big twenty two feet wide medians in a four lane roadway, and that cross section really has changed with the implementation of roundabouts at the intersection. So there may be an opportunity to actually reduce or stay just within that hundred and ten feet of rideaway and get the trail in there with the separation, uh, from the curb, and we want the opportunity to work with Public Works to see if that can occur and whether we really do need to, um, dedicate additional rideaway or not. And so the only change there is just to say, we'll, we'll dedicate that sixty six feet of rideaway or less if L T U, uh, is okay with a lesser amount, and it meets, meets the needs for the trail and the street.
What is it now?
Sixty six. Um, it's probably a fifty foot county road now, so we were definitely going to the sixty, a hundred and ten feet, fifty five. As Ben mentioned, um, we do have the Lincoln Housing Authority, that was a site that was sold specifically to Lincoln Housing Authority to provide some opportunity for some affordable housing in this area. Um, we also have already sold that site to Lincoln Public Schools, so it is a definite site for a future potential, uh, Lincoln, um, Lincoln School. This is just kind of an example of, of a project that clients have worked on for probably over ten years. Meetings with Mayor Bytler about making sure we had in the C I P sewer extensions to continue to serve this area out here because they knew it was an area where, where there was opportunity for growth and sometimes some more moderately priced, um, housing. And so it, it's fun to be coming back now with kind of a second big phase of this project because the first phase has been, you know, very successful and got a lot of new homeowners in this area of, of town based upon the first development. So fun to bring the second phase in and, uh, provide some additional opportunities along with Lincoln Housing and Lincoln Public Schools. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I forgot Mark Palmer from Olson's here too, if you've got any hard questions.
Questions? Great, thank you. Mark, anything you want to add?
Make up of it all, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there testimony in support of this application today? Any neutral testimony? Or testimony in opposition? All right. Questions for staff?
Yep. And it might be Bob in the back, but, all right, how do you, how does staff feel about the motion to amend and, and how this is worded for, you know, or less if it's approved by L T U?
Yeah, I might bring Bob up so he can comment on it, but.
Bob, sending out to you, uh, we have, uh, worked this out together and in fact, within just hours ago, so we're completely supportive of this. They've been very understanding of our needs and, uh, we appreciate that.
Okay, awesome, thanks for letting us know.
Other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Applicant rebuttal? Okay.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
This is closed public hearing.
Okay.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And, uh, I would, um, move to approve, if I can get my computer to work, somebody help me.
Comprehensive plan amendment two three zero, no, sorry.
Two two zero one four.
Yeah, two two zero one four.
Second, Joy, is this one that we amend or is it the other one?
No, it's the third one.
I'm still seconding it.
All right, Shelley, did you get that?
I did.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? And we could discuss all three at this time.
Well, this is a natural extension of what they've already started, uh, and that's a prime area for real estate development, it's far enough away from seventy seven, and, um, I think this makes great sense.
I agree, we do need housing.
It's nice when the developer comes in and asks for it kind of as a big chunk, and then we know there's going to be phases, so really we're, we're, we're kind of approving it for, you know, the long term, but we've set some, some standards for the next couple of phases, and so it makes our job a little bit easier, so thank you.
Yeah, I, it's amazing how quickly that part of our city is developing and all of the new homes coming up, it's, I think, fantastic, and I really like that we're already looking at how the school and affordable housing all are going to be coming together, and always appreciate when staff and developers have worked so closely together.
And just with collaboration with the people, the developments around, that they've talked to them and they're on board, because obviously they're not here.
Yep. All right, Shelley.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Annexation 22014 approved, eight to zero.
I would also move to approve Change of Zone 2037. It should be 22037.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yep.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
And I would move to approve Preliminary Plat 22004 with the amendment.
Second, Joy. Thank you.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved with the amendment, eight to zero. Next item is Item 5.1, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23001, to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to add the Major Streets and Rideaway Map with accompanying text. Staff, a staff memo dated March 29, 2023, identifying updates to the Major Streets and Rideaway Map, which is included with application for Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23001, should have been given to PC members. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Hello, Andrew.
Hello, Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff, 555 South 10th Street. This is the Major Streets and Rideaway Map along with associated text to add to the comp plan. A little bit of background, this was originally included in the 2040 comp plan. As, as you're all aware with the 2050 plan, we completely reconfigured all the sections, added new maps, added new figures, and as part of that process, this one inadvertently was left out. So it turns out this is a very important map, it's directly referenced in the subdivision ordinance, so we're coming back to you now to separately add it back into the comp plan as a comp plan amendment application. As part of the, the process of adding this back into the 2050 plan, we did work with LTU to make some really small modifications to the map. There were some projects within the city limits that rideaway needs have since, since been met, so we removed those from the map. There were some small stubs that we removed from the edges of the map. And then there were a few just miscellaneous sections throughout the growth area where we reduced the rideaway needs based on LTU input. So I, I think it's important to just, just mention and emphasize that there are some small changes to the map, but all of the changes were either reducing rideaway needs or just eliminating them for, for certain sections. So we did not increase any rideaway needs for any, any sections of streets. You did, you did receive the memo earlier this week. This memo is related to the, the letter we received a couple weeks ago about delaying this. So after we received that letter from Mr. Seacrest, we, we met with Mr. Seacrest and kind of discussed options. He was concerned about the section on, on Rockabye Road, broadly the section between 40th and 70th Streets, we were showing that as 120 feet of rideaway. There's some unique development conditions there that make 120 feet of rideaway not really realistic to achieve. So after talking with LTU, we've determined that 100 feet of rideaway is sufficient for this location, so that's reflected on the, the updated map, right there. The remaining portions of Rockabye essentially already have 120 feet of rideaway acquired, so we're, we're just leaving that as 120 feet. There's also some associated text with this map that I, I won't really spend too much time on. That text is essentially pulled from the Long Range Transportation Plan, and then some of that text is also from the 2040 comp plan, just brought over. No real changes there. Do we have any questions?
Could you explain, Andrew, why that's West Stub of Old Chaney and there were a couple others? Yeah, and then Van Doren Street also are at 100 between 82nd and 96th. Is there a reason for that going down versus the rest of the street? Since that street ends, that may be the reason.
Yeah, so, so here, it's, it's because of, you can see there's, there's a lot of major streets in that section, and that is not a, it's a smaller segment of street, so 100, 100 feet makes sense there. And Van Doren one, I, I believe is, is due to some constraints around the, the surrounding development.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Do we have any testimony in support? Neutral or testimony in opposition? Anybody think of any new questions for Andrew? All right.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23001.
Second, Joy.
Any discussion?
I think this is good planning by the department, and it sets out, a ways out what these street widths will be, and the necessary property for them, so I think that's good advanced planning.
Yeah, I will be supporting, it's really nice to have this as one of our reference points.
Yes.
All right, Shelley.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero. Our next item is Item 6.1 for action only, Change of Zone 23013, from AG Agricultural District to R1 Residential District, Planned Unit Development for Hobbie's Echo Edition to allow for up to 8, 8,200 square feet of office use in a hotel with up to five rooms, with associated waivers on property located at 1620 South 84th Street. This change of zone was carried over from the March 22nd hearing for action only as the motion to recommend approval as amended by the Planning Commission failed due to obtaining the necessary five affirmative votes to move it forward. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
Also, no.
Point of order?
Yes.
Does my motion still stand, or it, it does a new, no motion need to be made?
Yes, we have to make a new motion.
Okay.
So we'll entertain a motion on the change of though.
I would move to approve Change of Zone 23013.
Second, Joy.
All right, now we can discuss.
To clarify, this does not include their amendment.
Which amendment?
So Hobbie came forward with an amendment, so they didn't have to put in the.
Turning lane.
The turn lanes. Yes, and that.
Here comes George.
Here comes George.
Thank you.
Yes, my, mine would include their amendment to not have to, they will have to widen the driveway, but not put in the turn.
But not put in the turning lane.
Right. Again, my reason for support of this, the driveway already exists. If it didn't exist, then I would be opposed to adding another driveway along 84th Street. But with the driveway that's there and with the, with the width expansion of the, of the entrance, I don't see it being any more of a hazard than it is today. They aren't going to have that many people in and out of there. Most of their people are out in the field, so this allows them to create a headquarters office and, and have things organized instead of where they are now being spread apart in a lot of directions. As I said the previous time, this company has done several projects in the, in the community, including low-income housing, and I think this is, would be a very good use of this property, especially with, with the owner living right behind it. So I, he's not going to be doing something crazy on it.
I agree, we heard from many of the neighbors who were in favor of this project. I agree with Commissioner Campbell that there's already a driveway there, it's going to have to be 25-foot turning radius. It is a five-lane road with a center turn lane. I just, and the, the recommendation for a turn lane was based on future traffic, and we don't know what that's going to be because there's more bypasses coming in. I'm also going to vote again in favor of this.
Additional discussion?
Um, I'll just, I can restate, my, my thoughts haven't changed. When we're on the Planning Commission, we have to think long-term, so not just for this particular owner using it, but for future property owners. So when they go to relinquish their ownership, you know, then this is approved, and there's an office in there, and maybe that office will have more traffic. So we kind of have to weigh that into our, our thinking as well, and that's why I just, I, I won't, I won't go with the motion to amend, even though I know that there's, that's not on the table right now, I'm just saying that's my thoughts.
Clarify that?
Yep.
No, I'm just saying, Dick introduced a motion that was seconded, and Dick, you clarified that your motion included the amendment?
Correct.
Okay. So your opposition to the amendment then means that you also be opposing the motion because of that?
Right, right.
Got it, all right. I just want to make sure we were all on the same page when you were.
Um, my response would be that other major offices that have been developed along 84th have had to take access other than 84th. And I, I really don't view this, that property has sat vacant for, I don't know how long, I know it's over a year. And I think this is a good solution before we start getting a deteriorating property in, in such a prime area, so I'll be supportive.
Additional discussion? All right, Shelley, call the vote?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
No.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, six to two.
All right. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so?
I would move we adjourn.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
How do you forget that piece of it? Can I say no to adjournment when I'm a crazy girl?